She did everything for a number of years and is taking voice lessons locally. Like your sister Erin, Danielle is also a member of the Chorus Niagara Children's Choir. Danielle is also the lead in an upcoming musical at her school called Into the Woods. And by the way, the parents, of course, are Dave and Laura Martineau. Welcome to Erin and Danielle.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. Through paper love, in all our suns come and with glowing hearts we see they write the true north, strong and free, from far and wide. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
So Erin and Danielle, thank you on behalf of the members of council for gracing us with your presentation of Canada this evening. Thank you so much. I'd like to ask at this time, Counselor Peter Angelo, to read us in prayer.
Your worship, I'd ask everyone to bow their heads and pray for peace, and then for the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty, eternal God, we are grateful and kindle in all of us, a love for the many unfortunate people in poverty and misery, reduced to a condition of life unworthy of human means. Alows in the hearts of those who call you Father, a hunger and thirst for justice and peace, and for paternal charity in deeds and in truth. Grant, oh Lord, peace in our days, peace to souls, peace to families, peace to our country, and peace among nations. Amen.
Members of council, the first order of business is the adoption of the minutes, the council meeting of March 31st, 2008. Counselor Thompson, move back, Counselor, you want to speak for those?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to bring to council's attention the planning matter at the last meeting regarding the application for conversion of industrial lands to open space in the environmental protection area, watering waters. I made the motion to approve it, and after the motion was taken, there was an amendment that was suggested by Parliament Wayne. And I thought that the motion was quite appropriate, because certainly the Ministry of Natural Resources and all the agencies are involved and would be involved in the reports to council before this would be reconsidered. The specific motion was that the Ministry of Natural Resources be contacted to reevaluate the area for wetland significance. And this has already been evaluated, and the motion was to reevaluate it. I was contacted by the solicitor for the applicant after when he suggested that this would be a duplication of effort that's already been evaluated. There was a concern with the board itself from M&amp;R, and they felt that this was, they appreciated the motion, but they felt that this was inappropriate to have this reevaluation, which could hold them up for at least a year or two. So they asked me to, and Mr. Lustig, their solicitor, has a letter in front of the council here tonight bringing this to our attention. So at this particular time, I would like to perform, I make a motion, going back to the original motion, give the opportunity to Mr. Lustig to make any comments with respect to that, and after that, I would be happy to make a motion deleting that, so that there wouldn't be a lot of additional red tape and work that has already been completed, taking up the time of the applicant, and moving this application along. And I'm particularly in favor of this particular application because of the opportunity to save the environmental wetlands and the tree stands as was outlined in the report last council meeting. So I would move that Mr. Lustig be permitted to speak.
Okay, thank you for that recommendation, Counselor. Carry your second to that.
No, your worship, I need to clarify a conflict.
Okay.
And a conflict that, that week that it was addressed, and for the same reason, I'm an owner, business owner, in the Stanley Ave Industrial Park, and there are making some issues, so.
Okay. All righty, the second to this, Counselor Fisher. Counselor Peter Angelo, did you have a comment you wish to make?
I have a second to move.
Okay, all right, we've got a second to. So having seen the fact of a second to, all those in favor? Any opposed, the motion's carried. Mr. Lustig, would you like to come forward, please, and appreciate the opportunity to clarify this matter for your client?
Thank you very much, your worship. Good evening. And for the record, my name is Ed Lustig, and I'm working from Abroadneak and Carters. And I'm joined this evening again by my clients and with three of the planners of our group. Counselor Thompson has very properly and accurately summarized the concerns that we have. When we were here last, on the 31st of March, for you to consider our application, we were very gratified by the decision that the council made with respect to approving the report of the council of the staff, because we supported the report, and we supported all of the conditions in the reporting, and that was the position that we took before the council. And we're also completely content with the additional requirement that we meet with the Business Park people, and in fact, in the correspondence that I filed with you, you can see that there are emails and evidence of fact that we've already been in touch with the Business Park people, and are waiting really for them to give us dates for a meeting. So in those respects, we were completely happy and content with the motion. But as Counselor Thompson has mentioned, and as I highlighted in the letter that I've forwarded to you, when we reflected on the wording of the addition to the motion that was made after the meeting was closed, we do have concerns, and those concerns are set out in my letter on the second page. And we have four concerns in particular, and they are firstly, that the part of the resolution that is highlighted is inconsistent and contradictory to the staff report that we supported, and that was in fact adopted by council. And it therefore produces in itself an inconsistency and contradiction with the resolution that the council passed. And it's inconsistent as well with the recent decision of the NPCA, who we appeared before, and we received a unanimous approval of our application to proceed, subject to very onerous conditions respecting studies to ensure that the wetlands were adequately protected. That is inconsistent, because on the one hand, we're asked to engage in studies to ensure that the size of the wetland and the integrity of the wetland is kept intact, and on the other hand, the resolution purports to send us off to the Ministry of Natural Resources. And so it's a contradiction, and it's inconsistent. For your information, the M&amp;R, I'm told by my clients, have been on our site on at least two occasions, and as Counselor Thompson mentioned, they would be part of each one of the steps in the planning process. And I think I reviewed the various steps that we have to go through yet. There is the official plan amendment itself that has to be circulated. There is the next official plan amendment for the secondary plan. There's a zoning bylaw, and there will be plans of subdivision and condominium. All of those plans will be circulated to the M&amp;R, and by no means will they be prejudiced by the removal of the reference in the resolution that you passed. It's, I think, significant to know that our proposal currently preserves more lands than are designated or identified either locally significant or provincially significant by the M&amp;R itself in their mapping. And the M&amp;R has determined that the wetland that are present on our site that is significant from a provincial standpoint, which is a small area relatively speaking, that is an area that we've completely protected. That area is not an issue, we completely protected that area. So, your worship, the impact of this resolution that I've described, and I know it wasn't the intention of this council to send us on a wild goose chase or chase our tail around, I know that your motion was made in good faith, and that it was intended to assist us in moving forward. I think it had the unintended result of actually setting up the prospect of pulling us down and causing us what I concern, what I consider to be an undue, unfair, and unwarranted delay, and I'm sure that that's not what you intended. We've been at this for over 20 months, this was just an initial step, and I described the pluses, the pros of this project, we're protecting over 150 acres of green land, and we're regenerating 350 acres or so of brownfield, so I think we're doing the right thing here. And so, your worship, what we're asking tonight is that, for the reasons that I've advanced, that the council reconsider the resolution, and I think you have to do it in two steps.
Yes.
You have to reconsider it, and then if you agree that you will reconsider it, you, we ask you to pass a motion to delete the reference that I've underlined, that's been underlined from the motion.
Thank you.
Those are my submissions, and if you have any questions, either myself or Mr. Brady, we'd be happy to assist you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lustig. Are there any questions, members of council? Are there any questions of Mr. Lustig with regard to the issue at hand? Having seen none, and proceeding with, I'll ask the clerk to just give us an opinion, please. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Lustig's correct. You'd have to have a reconsideration motion. If that motion passes, then you can entertain the motion proposed, which is a deletion of that line that's outlined in your correspondence. The one thing I would also tell you that, as far as the actual adoption of the minutes, you should probably get that out of the way, because in my opinion, there's nothing technically wrong with the minutes, the minutes are accurate as what was approved at the March 31st meeting. So you should probably get that formality out of the way unless you have other issues with the minutes, and then deal with this reconsideration issue secondly.
Are there any other issues with regard to the minutes of March 31st? Having seen none, I'll call for a motion to adopt the minutes. Move by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Maves. Any discussion of the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk? Yes, okay. Counselor Thompson?
I would move a motion for reconsideration of the matter.
Move by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any comments to the motion? Yes, Counselor Wayne?
I'm going to vote against it. I had two sets of concerns and continue to have the same concerns, one's with the setback from the industrial park, and the other is with the environmental issues. And I said at the time I would only support the motion if it included that clause. And what I want is for the ministry to evaluate the lands under their current criteria, so I will not support the reconsideration, and if it passes, I will not support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment? Mr. Clerk? Dr. Barker, did you?
Well, I'd like to speak to this matter, although I'm not on the agenda, neither with Mr. Lustig.
Yes, I think that would be out of order, Mr. Barker, so at this point, I'd be a lot out of order at this stage for reconsidering the motion. Thank you.
It's your view.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Well, just, I mean, you didn't, we don't know that the reconsideration's going to pass, so we can deal with Dr. Barker after that. If the reconsideration passes, obviously it's up to council to make a decision if they want to entertain anybody else speaking. You know, one thing that dawned on me, we usually also pass a motion saying that if there's a change to an approval with a change minor in nature and doesn't warrant the notice of a public meeting, and it's probably in your best interest to pass a motion to that effect as well prior to considering any, after, if you pass the reconsideration.
So that a motion to reconsider, members of council, any further comments with regard to that motion? Having seen none, all those in favor of the motion to consider, one, two, three, four, five. There's one, one conflict declared, and those opposed, Janice Wing, Counselor Wing. Okay? Motion's carried. Now, at this time, yes, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, it's not my objective to cut anybody off here, and I would have no problem with Dr. Barker having his opportunity to speak, and so move.
Second to that motion? Sorry, Counselor Wayne, fine. Any discussion to that motion? All of them favored? Motion's carried. Dr. Barker, if you'd like to come forward, please, state your name and address.
Yes, I'm John Barker, I live at 134 Third Streets, St. Carters. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on this important issue. At the outset, I would ask members of council, have any of you read the Wetland Evaluation Manual of the Ministry of Natural Resources? One of the things they underscore there, that their evaluations are tended to be what they term "open files," that they mean they encourage looking at new information, and these designations are not supposed to be frozen in stone. So I think if the M&amp;R staff had made this comment, it's contrary to their own manual that's supposed to guide them in decision processes. And none of the council has actually read the manual. So I don't think you should make your decision tonight until you've actually read this document, see how these issues are supposed to be examined. Now, at one time, the entire area was designated a provincially significant wetland. I am not aware of all the reasons why the designation was changed. What I am aware, that that was during a period of time where the environmental community was outraged across Ontario that there were massive downgradings of wetlands, with what a lot of environmental opinion in the province considered to be ill-considered. Now, there is another matter that has happened since the wetland evaluation was made. At that time, the roundleaf greenbrier, which was identified as being present in the forest, I know there's some dispute now if it's still there or not. It was not identified at the level of a species at risk as it currently is designated. That is something that happened after 1998, I believe it was 98, when the wetland was The presence of an endangered species of that, I believe the category is threatened, that would make a much larger area of provincially significant wetland, the way the point system works. Point system for wetland evaluation gives very heavy points to threatened species. So that is a major thing that has changed since this evaluation was done. Another point that was not discussed at the council of all, including, I confess, my own presentation. When you had the previous discussion of the council, there was no identification of what the region has mapped as an environmental conservation area. Now, this designation was not present in 1988, 98, when the wetland was downgraded by the province. Region did not have any environmental policies at that time, policies which could have also an impact in wetland designation. I brought with me tonight a map of the core natural heritage area of the Niagara region. This was not part of your package at your previous council meeting. It shows a far larger area in forest cover than what was indicated by staff or the consultant at your previous meeting when you voted on this issue. This is the sort of information that M&amp;R needs to look at when they do a reevaluation, and one of the reasons they should do a reevaluation. And there was a lot of opportunity for these gentlemen here, subject to the region making it an environmental conservation area. This went through a rigorous process, and this should be part of the wetland evaluation that the Ministry of Natural Resources has done, that the region has adopted new policies to protect forests such as this, and it should be part of the ongoing philosophy of the open file of wetland evaluation.
Any questions to Dr. Barker or members of council? Having seen none, thank you much, Mr. Barker. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I would make a motion deleting that the Ministry of Natural Resources be contacted to reevaluate the area for wetland significance, and I make that feeling very confident that the system that is in place in evaluating any kind of development is certainly, in my opinion, to the point where there would be no areas of environmental concern overlooked, and I have no problem with moving this along. So I would make that motion.
Okay, Counselor Thompson, we have a hand being raised as well with requests to another speaker, and I want to reopen the public meeting, but at this point, I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, would you, can you mind if we held your motion until we take another motion on whether we can hear this next speaker? Counselor?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a request, is there, you're making a request to speak, subsequent to the last meeting? For someone to last minute? Okay, we have a request for Ms. Grandoni to make a presentation, kind of a motion to approve, Ms. Grandoni. Move by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. Please come forward, I'm sorry, I'll look in favor. Motion's carried, thank you. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeanne Grandoni, rural route number one, Ghana Road, Mac Falls, Ontario. First of all, we found out about this by chance, and I think before you reconsider, that you need to contact all of the people that were at the meeting on your public meeting last. This is totally unfair, it's a railroading of the procedure once again, despite the amendment clause, because the region said that it should be done concurrently, and as John Barker pointed out to me after the meeting, that means at the same time as the secondary plan, not after. And I would quote, so I'm not prepared to speak, but I'll do the best I can, considering the railroading job that you're doing on this. One day, we're going to wake up and find that we've got no more autumn, no more forests.
I'm not going to sit here and listen to this railroading business.
Thank you.
There's a procedure, she has the opportunity to speak.
He's the best of the issue.
There's other people.
The others.
We didn't even have a chance to notify them.
Ms. Grandoni, would you please address the issue?
On page six of your report, PD 200826, under B, Natural Areas. An environmental constraints analysis prepared by Al Campbell and Associates has been submitted with the application. The northern wetland coinciding with the Ramsey Woodlot, it says in brackets, a previously unevaluated wetland area south of the former rail line and the southeastern water course are identified as areas to be protected from development impacts. Now, it says "unevaluated," so their each, wetlands mapping is not up to date, as we, and as I said in my letter here of March 31st, I said the M&amp;R is recommending an update, and for the reasons that Dr. Barker just explained to you, if there are more species that are at risk or threatened that are becoming extinct, that ups, and in 15 years, that's highly possible, because I attended a meeting on, it was a video presentation, in fact, by Mr. Paul Robinson and others, declaring the loss of plants and animals and amphibians. And that's why in 15 years since Paul Robinson did this tree study, that we need to, and he didn't do wetlands evaluation, but M&amp;R has said somewhere that it needs to be updated. And the consultants that's doing this evaluation, our forester, whom we had for Fernwood, found 130 errors in her forestry report, or ecology report on Fernwood. So I shudder to think with a forest this large, the discrepancies that we will find, and I would ask that all of this be deferred till all other people that were involved can be notified. Thank you. We didn't even have time to do that.
Any questions of Ms. Grandoni? Or members of council? Well, thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask the proponent to address the matter, if they wish, in the proposal to present the proper equity and fairness in this matter.
Just a couple of points. To Mr. Barker's point, he acknowledges that the wetlands are as we represented them, they're exactly what they are, what the M&amp;R has done. And he's also said that it's an open file, and we've acknowledged that the M&amp;R will be involved as the process proceeds. So if it's an open file, they have the right to become involved if they so choose. But it's interesting to note that they haven't chosen to become involved, and they've known about this application. With respect to Ms. Grandoni's point about notice, to my knowledge, the only people who were at the meeting last time who were interested in this subject are here today again. Okay, thank you. Order, please. There was a woman who lived north of the property who was interested in the trees. I guess the last thing that I would say is that, I'm going to quote from the report that was approved by the council, and it's on page seven of the report, and it reads as follows. "The inclusion of a requested condition," and that's the condition of the NPCA, "that we leave a bunch of feasibility studies. Within the text of the official plan, this straightforward and will provide protection." And then it goes on to say, "Since some environmental feasibility studies are yet to be concluded, the residential policies within the proposed amendment will identify additional environmental areas that may be protected within the residential designation, and if this occurs, these lands may be designated as protective designation or zoning through the secondary process." Our point is not to avoid the M&amp;R, we're not afraid of the M&amp;R. Our point is timeliness, it's to get on with the process. We've submitted to a process that's going to examine this properly, and the M&amp;R is going to be there all the way. So I just want the council to be aware of those points. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Lustig. Got any questions of Mr. Lustig by members of council? Having seen none, and the pleasure of council, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I would make the same motion again, deleting the Ministry of Natural Resources from the previous motion, and let it stand as the approval of the report prepared by staff, and then also the contacting of the Stanley Business Park people. I'd like to have a recorded vote.
I'm going to second to that motion. Counselor Maves? Any discussion of that motion? Counselor Wayne?
I'd just like to remind the council a little bit later this hour, we're going to be receiving information on the park and the city's community and Moon's initiatives. At our last park and the city meeting, we received a handout about what the communities and Moon judges look for when they come to visit a community that's competing, and two of those things are sustainability and the community's natural infrastructure, its forests, its wetlands, and its streams. So you might want to slow down and be careful, and make sure we protect what needs to be protected.
Counselor Thompson?
Well, I think with the motion, that's exactly what we're doing, taking it out of industrial use, which could be bulldozed and destroyed tomorrow, and retaining it and preserving it.
Good point, thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, we can just echo Counselor Thompson's comments. I don't believe that most people understand that currently this land carries an industrial designation, and that means that there is zero, absolutely no protection for these wet, for these wetlands and forested areas. By moving it into a residential zoning, what you're doing in essence is you're actually zipping these wetlands. zipping these wetlands into these forests. I don't understand why we're not in support of that.
Thank you. Counselor Wayne, sorry?
I believe that it's currently protected by the region's tree cutting bylaw.
I'm not certain if that's the case, but, yeah, I'm not sure if that's certain. Do we know that? Mr. Horowitz, can you address that at all?
I believe the region would become involved if there was, as you were saying, a two cut.
Okay, thank you. All righty, any further questions? We have a motion on the floor. We'll call the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Dearbatty?
In favor.
Counselor Fisher?
In favor.
Counselor Mays?
In favor.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Wing?
Opposed.
Mayor Salsky?
In favor.
The passes?
Thank you. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate your presentation. Mr. Clerk?
You, it would be my suggestion, as your clerk, that you also pass a motion that the changes to the approval are minor in nature and don't warrant notice of a further public meeting.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Mays. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Just one, thank you. And no, not to the council. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Move on to the next order of business. At this time, I'm going to ask for a disposal of any pecuniary interest by members of council. Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, worship. Report PD 2008-30, Warren Woods' extension to the draft plan approval. There's an issue with SciTech and in litigation with SciTech on a piece of property that we're trying to develop on Stanley Avenue.
Okay.
And after 2008-16, we had a consent agenda tax adjustment. There was a tax adjustment on a piece of property that I had. The barn was burnt, and the house was demolished, so there was a tax adjustment.
So noted, thank you. Are there any other conflicts at this point? I'd like to dispose a check table to me, and it's check number 318842, and I'll declare conflict on that as well. This time, we're going to move on to deputations. And members of council, we have exciting news this evening with regard to the Lyons Park redevelopment. We have the Daniele and Viditurna families here. We presented a check for $16,000 in support of the Lyons redevelopment capital campaign. And these funds were raised in memory of Matthew Daniele and Adam Viditurna. And I have members of the family who are wishing to make the presentation after our own director, Parks and Rec, will make her presentation. So welcome, Ms. Norrisi.
Thank you, Mayor Salsky and members of council. On behalf of the families who are here tonight with us, and I certainly just like to reference their presence quickly. On behalf of the Daniele's, Michael, who also is a member of our staff team, and his son Christopher and his wife, Bruna. On behalf of the Vidarini family, and both Nicholas and Olivia, not able to attend, but Andrew and Marlena are here, are authors of our book, and you see the cover, Donna Manella, Maria, and not able to be with us, Silvana, and also here with us is Peter Vidarini. On behalf of Parks, Recreation, Culture, I wanted to give the background on why I'm making the presentation. It's one, it's sensitivity and emotion. And it's also because, Michael, after hearing his story the night that the Lyons, and three members are with us, presented, which council received openly, contacted staff in their interest in making a donation to this fabulous park. The background is going to be overviewed with the following PowerPoint presentation. Healing Through the Eyes of a Child was a truly a family effort and a collaborative way for these families to memorialize and celebrate the loss of their son. As the slide shows, the book is certainly created out of love, in memory of Matthew and in memory of Adam. Many in our community will long remember the loss of Matthew. He was on the soccer field, and he was next in the hospital. His strong athletic ability was no match for his complications, and as his family has often said, he was taken far too quickly. Equally, the loss of Adam, who died approximately three years ago while the family was on vacation in the Dominican, resulted, due to them losing Adam to drowning. As the slide reviews, they were at the resort, he went swimming, and unfortunately, that day, he drowned. As the department or division that has cemeteries, we often deal with families in grief. In this case, these families have come together. What will they do? And they wanted, we know, to show their love in a special way for the sons they cherish so much. Pivotal was that they wanted their boys to be remembered. So what started out as a personal work of love has evolved into what we are today with respect to their contribution to a blossoming park in our community called Lyons Park. They're hoping that their loss will continue, as it has with so many projects, to benefit others in our community. The families have used their funds and established two memorands. These foundations have generated enormous community support. They have supported the McBean Center, for example. They've supported many other initiatives in our community, and they reach out through the greater Niagara area. And I know that for the Daniele's, for the Matt Golf Club, I think you've been given a flyer on that coming event. The donation to the development of the Lyons Park redevelopment is significant. These are families who collectively have contributed enough, $16,000, to our great park. $10,000 of this, and what you saw was the cover, came from this collaborative effort which the families in their book. So the $10,000 proceeds, and the family's decision was very well thought out, they would like to donate to build a gazebo. Our staff would believe that was so significant because of the shelter that's provided in our community. Very symbolic in so many ways. Additionally, they were very touched by our special McBean picnic tables that provide fully handicap accessibility. And likewise, they too wanted to donate. So in addition to the $10,000 in the proceeds of the book, each family is also donating an additional $3,000 from the memorial funds of their sons to incorporate two fully handicap accessible picnic tables in this new great park. So as we've said, and again, tributing and celebrating the lovely boys, the boys will always be remembered for their love of sports and their athleticism. While they are saddling this, the families are here to celebrate their lives. And I'd like to call upon Manella, together, to present to Mayor Salsky and the members of the Lyons, Don, Dave, and Craig, a check for $16,000. And I know that a couple of words will be spoken on behalf of the family in this check presentation. So thank you.
Could you speak first, and we'll have the staff do the presentation. You want to take your words?
On behalf of the Daniele's and the Viditurna families, we would like to thank Mayor Ted Salsky and all of city council for your continued support of our families. We would also like to thank the authors and illustrators, some who are here, Maria Silvana, Donna Clare, for being inspired and honoring both Matthew and Adam in the book. The book forged a relationship with our two families and allowed us to come together and give back to the community, who was, gave us so much in our time of need. And it continues to support us in our ongoing efforts. The legacy that our boys, Matthew and Adam, left us with was to connect people and give back from the heart. And the proceeds from the dead book have allowed us another opportunity to memorialize our voice and be so, in such an appropriate way, in the Lyons Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I actually come forward here, please, worship? And we have members of the Lyons Club here, you know, present the game here in LA. Would you kind of go forward with your executive as well, and just to kind of introduce them for us?
Greg Robinson and Don Morris, chairman and co-chair of the Park Committee for the Lyons, Maggiot Falls. We have the Lyons probably Maggiot Falls, and the Park and Rec, the Park and Rec, the Red, the Red House in Niagara Falls. We want to thank you very much for this magnificent work, through our very work to our project. Then we can enjoy it by the sunshine of Maggiot Falls and the memory of your family for a long, long time. Thank you very, very much. We really appreciate it.
And as you guys are members of council, I wanted to echo those sentiments as well. I said to the family before, I'm just always so impressed on how they're committed to raising funds for such worthwhile causes and memory of their own lost loved ones mean so much to us and to them. So on behalf of the grateful community members, members of council as well, thank you so much for your commitment, and the memory of your family does the bond with your two sons. So thank you so much for your commitment. Thank you. Members of council, the next order of business is a presentation by Francis Berry and Pat Mascaren, who are members of the Park and the City Committee, and who will be, two students will be joining them from A and Meyer School, Mr. Andrew Peckham and Mr. Brian Stoner, with an update to council on the committee's upcoming activities. So welcome, Francis and Pat. Welcome.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor Salsky, members of council, senior staff, ladies and gentlemen. The Park and the City Committee has been appointed by city council to encourage civic pride, environmental responsibility, and beautification within our city. My name's Fran Berry, and this is Patricia Mascaren, and we are members of this committee. Counselors Janice Wing and Victor Peter Angelo co-chair the committee for us. I'd like to provide you with a brief overview of our upcoming events for Earth Week and a few other activities that we're involved in. On May the 8th, 2007, the city of Oshawa issued a national tree challenge, challenging Canadian municipalities to join Ottawa in planting trees for the planet. Ottawa has committed to planting 100,000 trees between 2007 and 2010, and has registered this pledge with the United Nations Environmental Program, UNEP, Planet for the Planet Billion Tree Campaign, which is a major worldwide tree planting campaign with the objective of planting at least 1 billion trees worldwide during this period of time. At December 10th council meeting, city council approved the request from the city of Ottawa to enter the National Tree Planting Challenge as well. The Park and the City Committee is now ready to challenge everyone to plant trees. We're challenging you, city residents, businesses, schools, churches, everyone. And when you've planted your tree, you can register your tree with the city of Niagara Falls website. If anyone is unable to log on, please call the city's Parks, Recreation, and Culture Office and register your trees at 905-356-7521, extension 3330. Just in time to help with the National Tree Planting Challenge, the Park and the City Committee will be selling sugar maple trees on Saturday, April 19th, at Sylvia Place Market. At only $4 each, each tree has, is a bare root tree and will be approximately 6 to 12 inches tall. So when you purchase your tree, please remember to log on to the city website and register your tree for the National Tree Planting Challenge. And speaking of trees, please join us as we plant trees with West Lane Secondary School and Kada Student School students at Dastibus Monroe Park. Dastus Monroe Park has seen extensive damage from past winter storms, and we'll be planting a variety of trees at this location on Arbor Day, Friday, April 25th, at 9:30 a.m. If there happen to be any sugar maple trees left from the tree sales at Sylvia Place Market, we will be having them available for sale on Arbor Day at Dastus Monroe Park. The trees that we are planting are for trees for today and for future generations as well. The Niagara Falls Schools and Bloom launch will be held on Earth Day, Tuesday, April 22nd, at 12:30 p.m. at A and Meyer Secondary School. A and Meyer was selected as winner of last year's competition, and they are hosting this year's launch. So we hope that you are able to join us at the Niagara Falls Schools and Bloom launch on Earth Day. The Park and the City Committee is pleased to be able to partner with the local Niagara Falls high schools and the Niagara Parks School of Horticulture. Together, we help students learn about the exciting world of horticulture, and we work together to beautify their school grounds. The winner of the 2007 Niagara Falls Schools and Bloom Challenge was A and Meyer Secondary School. A and Meyer student Andrew Peckham, Brian Stoner, and Raymond Thong were instrumental at Meyer with this program. Together with their team, they put in more than 500 volunteer hours last summer, and they made incredible changes at their school. One of the changes that they made was in taking an abandoned courtyard. It was abandoned for more than 20 years, and in creating a new garden for students to, and staff to enjoy. These three students from A and Meyer were also selected to receive the city's 2007 Civic Pride Award for demonstrating a true commitment to our community, making the city a nicer, cleaner place to live in, and by making a difference in the daily lives of those who live and go to school there. Andrew and Brian are here today to tell you about their experience and involvement in the Niagara Falls School and Bloom program.
Thank you, Fran. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is Brian Stoner, and this is my partner, Andrew Peckham. And we are members of A and Meyer Courtyard Crew. For the past two years, our small but keen club has been undertaking the task of rejuvenating the South Courtyard at A and Meyer. After 25 years of neglect, we decided to completely redo the courtyard. Our original plans consisted of general landscaping, but gradually grew into an underground irrigation system and several large tree removal projects. Our group has put a lot of effort and time into this project, which in total makes up over 600 hours of community service labor between Andrew and myself. Schools and Bloom has helped us by providing us information and knowledge of the horticulture trade. It has also introduced us with Dr. Armage and the others from the School of Horticulture. And it's further enriched our knowledge. It's also added to our knowledge about communities and Bloom and how next year we're going into it, so our school activities can further enhance the city's appearance. Yeah, so our project that we've just started now is an interlock and retaining wall pathway leading into our North Courtyard. Recently, a special needs class has come to A and Meyer from Stanford, and they cannot get out into the courtyard to improve their life skills of watering plants and weeding and things. So we have decided to come up with plans to install a stone interlock pathway and raise retaining beds so the students in wheelchairs can get out and weed. So we are actively fundraising for that event. We are looking for screenings and other materials to help us advance in this project. And I just want to close by saying, I'd be very happy and it would be our pleasure to invite you to come and have a tour on Earth Day, April 22nd, because we're hosting it at our school now, this year, for Schools and Bloom. So I just want to thank you once again for taking this time out of your busy schedule to let us speak. And just remember, to beautify any part of the city is to enhance the appeal of Niagara Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian and Andrew. My name is Pat Mascaren. I'm a volunteer member of the Park and the City Committee. We would like to invite council and residents to join us in a community cleaning sweep day. To be held on Saturday, April 26th, at 9 a.m. to 12 p.m. I hope everybody's writing that down.
Yes.
We want to sweep our city clean or stash the trash, if you've heard that before. We will be picking up litter on selected streets, sidewalks, boulevards, within the city. Celebrate Old Downtown volunteers will be participating also, along with many others. We're asking our Niagara Falls residents, businesses, families, churches, students, everyone, to come out and join in this fun. Barbecue bags will be provided. Bring your garden gloves, wear brightly colored clothing, a hat, some sunscreen, we're thinking sun, and bring your family and friends. Meet us at 9 a.m. on Saturday, April 26th, at Mike Picarello Parking Lot, 5619 Ellen Avenue, near Center Street, that's in the Memorial Arena area. Look for the Remax balloon, as the Remax agents Daniela Metrovic and Kathy Santelis will provide refreshments at 9 a.m. Shero's International Cuisine is providing orange juice. Cheryl's International Cuisine is providing orange juice and Starbucks coffee and tea. We ask that you set aside about two hours of your day to help tidy up our city. And at 11:00 a.m., after it's, it's over, the, the job is over, you'll be enjoying a free barbecue provided by Mike Picarello and pizza from Sappy's Pizzeria and food from Golden steer. And that's not all. It's not all. Free Bird Kingdom passes for all the students volunteering today. Excited to see you. Live entertainment by Don Johnson and The Broken Lion, the winners of the FanCon. We're asking everyone to please pre-register if you could. 905-356-7521, extending 330. Hope to see you on Saturday, April 26th.
Thank you very much Pat and Francis. You have some more to, yes, do it please?
A bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Can't get rid of this yet.
Well, that's great, that's great. All exciting news.
That's right. The Park and the City Committee realizes that there are limited funds within the city budget for greening and beautification. So the committee has, in order to assist in this area, created a donor card program for the Park and the City Memorial Fund. Donor cards have been placed at each of the Niagara Falls funeral homes and are also available at Fairview Cemetery and the Parks and Recreation and Culture Office. All donations of $10 or more will receive an acknowledgement letter which can be used for income tax purposes. This is a wonderful way to make a donation for your city and for future generations. The Summer Tullium Awards Program will run again this year. Last year, the judges viewed many outstanding properties in our city, and here are a few of the photos from numerous winning properties. In the photos shown clockwise from the top left, the first place residential category is the Shannon's Property on Armory Street. First place church category, Christ Church on River Road. And first place commercial property, other category, Patterson Funeral Home on Main Street. Nomination deadline this year is July 18th, and the forms are currently available on the city website and at the City's Parks, Recreation and Culture Office at the McBain Community Center. In May, the nomination forms will be available at local garden centers as well. So don't forget to nominate your own property or the property of someone else that you might admire. The Park and the City Committee will be leading the city in 2009 as we enter Communities in Bloom. This program is about more than just flowers. It's about creating civic pride, environmental awareness, a healthy community, and community involvement. This is our call to you and the entire community for help to get involved. Help us increase the quality of life not only today but for tomorrow. You can make a difference. Join in the Community Clean Sweep Event on April 26th and meet us at 9:00 a.m. at the Ellen Avenue Parking Lot. And remember to pre-register. You can also adopt a street, create a new garden, care for your heritage, purchase a tree on April 19th, plant it, and register your tree on the city website for National Tree Planting Challenge. We're asking residents, business owners, schools, churches, everyone to get involved. This is about making our community better for everyone. If you wish to get involved, remember to take before and after photos and to send the photos with the information to the city at PRC@niagarafalls.ca. We will be collecting information on all the great work in our community. There are so many good reasons to get involved, and here is just one. What is our legacy for future generations? Become involved in our city's appearance, maintenance, and development. Let's work together to protect, restore, and enhance a healthy, sustainable, and livable community. We look forward to seeing you all at our upcoming events. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. There might be some questions, and also I'm going to call on the co-chairs of the Park and the City Committee, Councilors Janice Wing and Counselor Victor Peter Angelo. So Janice and Victor, would you like to make comments as well?
Sure. Victor and I both have the official food bags, and we're both going to be there on Saturday, April 26th, doing our part. And we'd like to challenge the rest of the council to get involved and believe in the community as well.
We'll be there. So again, on behalf of members of council, I wanted to thank both of you for your involvement and also to acknowledge both Brian and Andrew for their attendance this evening and their enthusiasm with this last year in the competition. I wanted to say as well, the never-ending efforts of your committee are much appreciated in making our city a better place. Recently, about two weeks ago, we joined with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee to do their Adopt a Street program, which was actually Morrison Street from Stanley to Portage. And we were able to enjoy, enjoy with them, join with them to actually improve with that area a bit. So hopefully, we can encourage all of our residents to do so. And to remind those who are watching, on your behalf again, that all these activities will contribute to the progress-wide competition for Communities in Bloom that will enter next year. So this is all important that we have this all recorded. So on behalf of the members of council and the residents of Niagara Falls, thank you and members of the committee for your commitment to making Niagara Falls a more beautiful place.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, members of council, we have a deputation from the Boys and Girls Club to make a special request to us this evening. I'm going to call the president to come forward, please. Mr. Jeff Wallace, welcome Jeff, and you're with council.
I'm not the president, actually. I don't have the aspirations. My wife is the president.
Okay, chair of the foundation, is that fair to say?
Actually, she's always the president. I should clarify a little bit since we're on camera. She's always the president.
And I thought you were chairing the foundation, are you doing it?
Yes, okay, good, thank you. Welcome, Mayor Salsi, City Council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to request your support in relocating the Boys and Girls Club to McLeod Road. I'd also like to thank many others that have contacted us through the community over the last week, and as well our board and foundation members and staff who are here in support this evening. For almost 50 years, the Boys and Girls Club facility and programs have been a significant component of the city's recreation and leisure delivery system. This model of program delivery for community organizations is quickly becoming the model of choice for municipalities throughout the country based on its cost-effective nature and the ability to leverage municipal funds to provide expanded and enhanced programs and services. As such, the city of Niagara Falls contributes approximately $210,000 annually to the Boys and Girls Club operating program and has a serious vested interest in the replacement of the facility on Cock Street. Over the nine years since the start of this project, there's been some confusions as to why we got to the point where we are today, questions such as why is the Boys and Girls Club not in the McBain Center? And why did the Boys and Girls Club not proceed with McLeod Road property? These continue to emerge, the detriment of moving the project forward. In 1999, the club was asked to participate in an equal partner in a project to replace the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA buildings. The feasibility study of the day recommended the construction of a new facility housing both the Boys and Girls Club and the Y and three pools, all located together near Niagara Square. By 2002, the city staff proposed a new scenario to city council. The new scenario would see the equal partnership dissolved with city staff taking over an expanded project, which included city staff offices, a library, a senior drop-in center, a YMCA fitness center, one pool, and shared space for participants, including the Boys and Girls Club. This could be accomplished through the elimination of the club space with a cost savings of $4 million. It became evident to the Boys and Girls Club that continuation of the project in a shared model would result in significant loss of child and youth programs in the community. City staff requested a decision. To ensure the continued level of service for children and youth, the club agreed to develop other long-term plans. Between 2002 and 2003, the Boys and Girls Club were offered three different potential sites, two gifted and one purchased. The McLeod Road property was identified as the best site working closely with city staff. The club conducted the requested studies, rezoned, and underwent the site planning process in spite of the conditional site plan. City asked the club to engage in another comprehensive feasibility study. In May 2007, city council accepted city staff recommendations to approve a new club contingent on the selection of one of three city-owned sites. The club, with support of city staff, selected A.G. Bridge based on the proximity to children and youth served. The city council directed staff to commence rezoning and prepare the appropriate bylaw amendment. But on March 17th, 2008, would not approve the site for construction of the new Boys and Girls Club. During that time, the construction costs for the replacement of the facilities of 32,000 to 33,000 square foot building had risen from $4 million in 2002 to $11.5 million in 2008, without consideration given to the cost for associated studies, consultants' time and cost, staff time, and both the Boys and Girls Club and the City of Niagara Falls. This translates into a historical increase of $1.25 million annually, or $100,000 a month. We're here tonight because after nine years of study and planning and site selection processes, the Boys and Girls Club is currently without a city-approved site for the new Boys and Girls Club project. We've noted from staff reports that undertaking another comprehensive site selection process will take another eight months. I have another city-generated document that notes a 12-month process for site selection. We truly appreciate staff's optimism. The last feasibility study was estimated at six months, it took 10. Rezoning of A.G. Bridge was estimated to take four to six months, it took 10. And once a site has been selected, the delay could continue for an additional 24 months, depending on the site that is approved, to allow for possible rezoning, site assessments, or further viability studies. Delaying an additional 24 months can also compound the time to another three years and to an additional cost of close to $4 million, creating an unnecessary burden to the community. The McLeod Road site is available at no cost to the taxpayers. Rezoning with a conditional site plan approval, it can be shovel-ready in nine months. It allows continued service to the primary participant base in a violent market with minimal impact on surrounding service providers. Waiting all, moving forward with the McLeod Road site tonight represents a truly cost-effective resolution in relocating a much-needed child and youth facility in the city of Niagara Falls. Understanding the value of the McLeod Road site is linked to the understanding that it is a relocation project. And most importantly, it's about relocating people, not just bricks and mortar. In particular, the primary users, the children and youth who are at the club as I speak, will be in tomorrow and the next day over the course of a year, are 2,500 strong. It's approximately 5,700 program participants. And the purpose of constructing a 33,000 square foot replacement building is primarily to relocate these valued people with a modest opportunity for growth. Increases in participation in childcare and kids' own recreation programs not offered at the McBain Center are projected to be an average of 10 additional spaces per program year. Recreation and leisure programs at 30 registrations per session, and aquatics primarily swim lessons at 38 registrations per session. While there are fears that approximately a pool may marginalize both the Boys and Girls Club and the Y aquatics programs, the input was never quantified. It is unlikely that 38 aquatic registrations per session will financially make or break either organization. If the club were to only retain its current participation in all sports and leisure and rec, and aquatic programs with no growth, the net effect on the projected 2012 operating program in the new facility is $11,000 annually. Only 0.01% of the total budget, not a significant impact on the Boys and Girls Club, or likely not on the YMCA. Upset studies show that the people are fairly even split in preference of whether they register for programs annually or by the 10-week session. This preference was mirrored by the 2006, 2007 swim lesson registrations with both the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA at 1,500 swim lessons each. The club is confident this trend of participation, then on the differences in registration and approaches will continue with the club relocated at McLeod Road. It's important to recognize the potential competition was not seen as an issue when it was planned that the two organizations operate with an aquatic center housing three pools in the same location. The compatible nature of the two organizations is further evidenced by the fact that in spite of moving closer to the Boys and Girls Club, participation at the Y has increased by 514% due to factors considerable cost utilization, about 25% for two facilities. What is crucial, crucial to sustainability is the relocation of children and youth to our childcare. With the sizable childcare program and the child and youth recreation programs in the same building, operating expenses are shared, allowing enhanced programs to be available at a current low cost to the public. The majority of recent growth has occurred in the city's west end. Much of the residential growth over the next 10 years is to occur in the southwest end, particularly along the McLeod Road west of the QW, and as such, the Boys and Girls Club can retain the primary participant base. Infill from waiting lists and draw from the city's greatest area of growth to meet budget and service obligations supporting the sustainability. Conversely, locating the adult stone road in Senix, specifically Curro, Puma Park, would likely necessitate a considerable increase in the annual city support required to do immediate loss of revenue. Specifically, if relocated today and moved to the north location, would reduce the child participation by 92 children. This translates into a deficit in only of $78,000, and by 2012, the projected deficit could reach $140,000. Further, according to a public opinion survey conducted by Montiff Brown Planning Consultants, the population of North End, which is your L2J, post code, was identified as the least likely to register with the Boys and Girls Club. Relocating it in North End would likely require a significant increase in support from the city of Niagara Falls, estimating between $150,000 and $200,000 annually, or $2 million over a five-year period. Over time, we plan to give it a place but likely by significantly impacting other daycares in the area. Staff have circulated the site examination in 2007, and in all fairness to the consultants, they did qualify their selection process, criteria, and criteria weighting, stating that it was the opinion of a consultant only based on the information available. And certainly, part of that information was a potential for building another community center with a library in the north end. While the Boys and Girls Club of Niagara recognized that the criteria would likely identify an appropriate site for another community center, several red flags, flags were raised with respect to its application to the relocation of the Boys and Girls Club project. Specifically, the criteria placed only 8% importance on the closest to population served. Only 4% was based on safety and security, and 0% was based on retention of our current participants and financial viability. More important as well, that three weeks ago, city staff supported A.G. Bridge Park as a new site. The A.G. Bridge Park was within three points of the McLeod Road site using that same scoring criteria. The greatest concern to all of us should be the potential increases in costs associated with alternative sites. A possible three-year delay to decide on another site, preparation and site planning could increase the cost in total of $1.7 million. Purchase a property or use the city property, and it's not free, could increase the total cost of the project by the value of the land up to $1.5 million. If a site such as Diamond Jubilee or Jack Bell were chosen, compounded demolition costs could come into play, adding potential increases, and begin with a staggering $3.8 million. The McLeod Road site is available at no cost to the taxpayers. It's rezoned with a conditional site plan. Waiting all, we move forward towards the McLeod Road site. It represents a truly cost-effective resolution to relocating the much-needed child and youth programs and services in Niagara Falls. We'd like to thank all the city staff, councilors, and club supporters, and those at home who stopped through these studies, selection processes, and deferrals for nine years, and for sitting through this again tonight. There's really nothing new here, and nothing here that will change in a week, a month, or likely a year, except the cost. We respectfully ask council to bring us a positive resolution this evening and approve McLeod Road as the site for the new Boys and Girls Club. If the site approved, we can move forward together to complete the balance of the work, not the least of which is recommending the capital campaign, recommencing the capital campaign, and securing funding from the provincial and tribal governments. This is possible through letters from council in support for the priority project. We'd be happy to clarify anything further, but with your support, we'd happy to get the shovel in the ground. I brought the shovel late tonight, so. I'd be happy to put it in the water. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Are there any questions by members of council of the Representatives and Boys and Girls Club? Counselor, do you have a?
Thanks very much, Mr. Wallace. We did what we call. My one question was that I'm not sure if you covered it or missed it or somewhere. What percentage currently are bused into the current location? Do we know that?
Okay, I answered that question.
The, with the combination of busing, the recent analysis that we did, was 75% of the kids that we serve are self of Slendy's name.
75% are self. Seventy-five percent are south of Wendy's Lane? Okay. So what percentage is bused for somebody there?
We had thirty of our... Okay, not all the children are bused. The busing is really associated with the childcare programs and that kids' own program, where the kids are bused in for the twenty dollars a year for the four, four programs. For the backland leisure and the aquatics programs, it's all dragged too. But for the childcare, the analysis that we felt would have a major impact on our operating program, the seventy-five percent are both Wendy's Lane, which means it couldn't even be bused from Kerr Park.
Any other questions? Counselor Maves?
I'm a little concerned the revenue between the two clubs. If they're both on McCloud Road, is there going to be a profound effect on... I know you mentioned these are not that great a deal.
The fifty-five hours of our prime time at the Boys and Girls Club is spent on child and youth programs, and thirty-five of those are these kids' own programs and the childcare programs that aren't at all in competition with anything happening at the McBain Center. Those are two main programs, and while they're going on at the McBain Center, there's a wide variety of programs for the broader public spectrum, fifteen, sixteen different programs going on. Well, really, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we only have the two, and Saturday afternoon. The conflict, or the perceived conflict, would come from the little karate programs we have, or the swimming programs, and the aquatics programs, plus the swim lessons. And we believe that people have a preference of having one register for those programs. The studies that we have, the polling said in two thousand and two, said half people want to register for a ten-week program, where half people want to sign up for the Y for a full year. And that's exactly how people are registering right now. There's fifteen hundred of the Y, fifteen hundred of the Boys and Girls Club. So we don't see that trend changing, but if we only took the purchase of three half from where we are, at Cut Street, and took them to McCloud Road, and we only did that, and we didn't grow at all, it would only be eleven thousand dollars on our one point five million dollar budget. So we're thinking, if that's the only impact that we have on the Boys and Girls Club, we certainly can't speak for the Y, but certainly thirty-eight registrations per session can't be enough to negate the millions of dollars awaiting a turn to find another site.
Now, you also mentioned if you went to the north end, the Kerr Park area, that you probably lose a large amount of your...
Ninety-two of those children, or you could pick up at schools or live north, sorry, south of Wendy's Lane. They could likely over time, perhaps five, six years, be replaced, but... And it would certainly be because for childcare, it would be very, it's very, people are very attracted to the kind of Boys and Girls Club because of the pools and the different amenities. But ultimately, we would do that by pretty much cannibalizing all of the daycares down there in that area, and that's somewhat found upon us, and this day and age, we've certainly found out when we were going to the Elizabeth Center in St. Catherine's, that that was something that they really wanted us to stay away from, and at the region, the region of Niagara.
Ms. Morrissey, do you have any, any figures or anything that would relate to the revenues? How would affect the aim plan?
Ms. Morrissey?
Through you, Ms. Selsey. As council is aware, a very comprehensive detailed study, and you can give in the executive summary, and many other extractions from that report. It was concluded by Monty Brown in partnership with three other well-reputable firms, JF Group, Claire Tucker Wees Firm, and an architectural firm that actually built the McBain. In your, in your attachments, and I'm going to refer to those specifically in order to address, and relying on the consultant's report, they did, when they benched three locations, place an extreme analysis on some of the concerns with what they consider equitable in distribution of community resources such as aquatic centers. Specifically, I'm going to just read the following because it's verbatim. "Geographic proximity of the proposed B and G facility should contain an indoor pool due to the McBain Community Center would have a detrimental impact on the ability of each facility to attract users and generate revenues. This would be a consistent theme throughout the cautionary analysis on the rating of the sites. Additionally, an improved geographic distribution of indoor aquatic facilities in the city is required in order to maximize community benefits and improve the financial sustainability of all organizations involved." There's a number of points throughout this seventy-five thousand dollar analysis that speak to this in terms of community need. Without some of the information that's been brought through the Boys and Girls presentation I do appreciate as a new tonight, we haven't had a chance to assess that, but if you go through the attachments that we've referred to, the B and G site on the McCloud Road was identified by the consultants as the least preferred site. They against quote on another page in a assessment, that this does not promote an equitable distribution due to its preceding McBain. At staff and with the consultants, we have always placed a high foundation in the analysis of distribution of services for all of community. While we appreciate the new information that B and G has brought together tonight regarding Palmer or Kerr in the north end, from a strictly recreation service provision, we as staff would see that that would be fundamentally an approach you would take as a municipal service provider. We believe that the examples that have been repeatedly given, you would not put two libraries side by side, nor would you build two fire stations side by side, is an analogy that's consistent with the service of recreation. Granted, there are dissimilarities between the two organizations, but likewise, there are far many similarities between the core services they provide. And as staff, we were pivotal in terms of our responsibilities to the taxpayer and the investment of the five million dollars. I hope that that summarizes some of the background. Without having accurate data and the business plan and some other outstanding information, I'm not really able to comment on their growth or their future, but I hope that that vets exactly what the consultant was trying to bring forward through the report.
Thank you, Bart, I feel like. To get, to get an understanding, I don't know if that's a Monty Brown you're reporting there or not, Denise, but basically, to get a visual picture, Bart, insofar as an aquatic center, the aquatic center at McBain's is about nine thousand square feet. The proposed size of the aquatic center at the Boys and Girls Club is two thousand square feet. So, A, to compare the two is ridiculous. It's one quarter the size. That was how we got to that size, was through the Monty Brown report. That's the report that we've been following. To a point about the being last scored on the McCloud Road site, three points above that, so it's from sixty, which is in the McCloud Road rating, to a sixty-three. Sixty-three was acceptable, so I don't see why sixty wouldn't be acceptable either.
That would be my next question.
Well, the third thing is, if I'm sorry, but the third thing is, north end of the city, anybody knows here, to try and drive a bus from north end to that city, through Old Stone Road at three-thirty, which is your optimal pickup time for your kids, for schools, is a nightmare. So that's another reason you want to try and avoid that major traffic congestion area, so.
Counselor Maves?
Yes, no, just some other questions that I had. We've obviously eliminated A.G. Bridge Park, and I'm wondering about the Palmer Park. I think my, my own opinion is Kerr Park is too far north, and I think Palmer Park is, from my situation, be between Palm Park or the McCloud Road site. I'm just wondering, is there sufficient area in Palmer Park to do that? It would be using up some ball diamonds, or what would happen in that?
Ms. Morrissey, can you address that, please?
Through you, Ms. Selsey. Palmer Park's approximately five acres. It is extracted with the analysis that if Palmer Park was selected, it would be primarily devoted to, and the majority of the entire area would be for the Boys and Girls Club, including parking. In contrast, Kerr Park is approximately eighteen to nineteen acres, not excluding the share area we have, and it would be incorporated into that particular landscape.
The other thing is, this last study we had, when was that dated?
The Monty Brown team report was presented to council in May of two thousand and seven. It was approximately an eight to ten-month endeavor. There was a steering group, which was made up of representatives of city staff, and actually public partners with us, and representatives of the Boys and Girls Club as well. So I get all counsel has given, which is commissioned for about seventy-five thousand dollars.
The other thing is, I guess this has been going on for nine years. I just don't understand the length of this, and there was another study prior to this?
There have been numerous studies, Bart. I think, I think the key component here, if, when Monty Brown came back with his recommendations on paring down the size of the facility, one of the primary reasons was the business plan we had drawn up was going to be pretty aggressive to facilitate a forty-one thousand square foot building. So we said, fine, let's take the double gymnasium component out of that scenario, which dropped the price by two million dollars. The problem is, in June of this year, we'll be at two years in delays, and the cost in construction delay is about one and a half million dollars. So the more we delay, the more it costs. We can study things to death, and we can figure out where we're bringing kids from and where we're taking them to, but the bottom line is, we've studied it enough, we've got the Monty Brown, we agreed on the consultant, by the way, the Boys and Girls Club and the city. The criteria on site selection was skewed at best, but we followed it to the letter. We crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is and followed the process down to A.G. Bridge. Now we're just simply asking to pick a site from McCloud Road. It only makes sense.
Counselor Maves, do you have anything further?
Should we pick another site? You'd be disappointed with that. If somebody gets a site.
I think that certainly Palmer has been brought up, and I noticed that it was also brought up in, in the press. As you are well aware, there is a pilot area of brownfield in the city that is being worked on currently by city staff. I think there's a report from two thousand and six, I have some, some copies, some Palmer copy is part of, part of that. And with the environmental site assessments, with tables for the Ministry of Environment, there's, there's two sets of criteria. One is the community use, and there is another different set of criteria for institutional use, for like child cares and schools and such. And those, and those assessment values and standards are very different, especially for heavy metals, hydrocarbons, and that type of thing. So the concern with, that we have with respect to Palmer is that we, we may be getting into a lot of environmental assessments.
Mrs. Hetzer, it's going to be a request for clarification of that, so I'd like to call in either, Ms. Morrissey. Mr. Gillick, could you address the matter of the, whether that's a brownfield site at Palmer Park?
Yes, through your worship, the Palmer Park site is not a brownfield, and it is a city park, so that's, you know, and using any type of land to park, it does have higher standards than say for industrial purposes, but that's not ever been included in any type of brownfield in part of the city.
How was it off the city's outside?
Shouldn't be included. It's, it's never been part of our brownfield, but it is a park right now.
I can certainly give it to you, maybe, maybe they're sending it over there.
Okay. We could make note of that, but that, that isn't a brownfield, Mrs. Hetzer, so I'm not sure if you want to supply that too. You can just pass it down, because it's adjacent to it, to the station. And Counselor Maves, have you had all your questions answered? Okay. I'm going to call in Counselor Carrio next, please.
Thank you, your worship. I personally don't believe that if the Boys and Girls Club were to pick to McCloud Road, that it's going to hurt the Y MCA. I mean, you just got to go to that facility and see the participation at that facility, and see the facility. If the location of the Boys and Girls Club, who's that facility, I'd be shocked. It's a fabulous facility, and I don't think that locating the Boys and Girls Club on McCloud Road is going to affect that site. That's my personal opinion. I think location is everything, and I don't think it's... I think McCloud Road is a great location for the Boys and Girls Club, and I don't think that the Boys and Girls Club should be hindered by sending them to a bad location. I think they should have the opportunity of being in a good location. If there's a little bit of competition with the Y MCA, so be it. I think that there's plenty of business for both of them, and that's what I firmly believe. Shut down another park, we've been through that. You know, to, to take park land away from some community and, and give it to the Boys and Girls Club, we went through that a couple of weeks ago. We were all prepared to give them the land at the, at that park, and then the residents showed up in mass, and we turned and ran like chickens. So I think the McCloud Road site is a, is a decent site for them. I don't think that it's going to hurt the Y MCA, one bit or our community center. We have a fabulous community center. I don't think that it can be hurt by locating there. And when they're, we're ready for motion, I'd be prepared to make the motion or second motion at the, that P G.
Other things?
The Boys and Girls Club staff, volunteers, they believe in the McCloud Road site. They're the ones that have to make it work. They believe in it. I believe in it, too.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I think there comes a time when you, you have to bite the bullet. I think we've been around about nine years, we've been around this scenario, and I heard them talking a minute ago about Palmer Park. I grew up about thousand, fifteen hundred feet from Palmer Park when the asylum was very active, and I can tell you, if that isn't a brownfield site, then once you start digging there, you're going to find out that it is, because that, the contamination from that industrial site there on Palmer Park, which was very adjacent, would be substantial. I was a little disappointed last, a couple of weeks ago, when the A.G. Bridge Park was recommended. I personally thought it was a very difficult site, way back in residential streets. I didn't think it was a good park, and I've had enough experience over the years that every time you try to change a park from what it is, when the people have been there for twenty, thirty, fifty years, in some cases enjoying that park, and you try to change that, you're going to get the kind of reaction we got a couple of weeks ago, and it was obvious the people did not want their park changed, and that would be consistent with any park. The other thing that was never mentioned was also the name A.G. Bridge. Would it remain as A.G. Bridge? It was named A.G. Bridge for a reason. Kerr Park was named for a reason. Palmer Park was named for a reason. And I had the experience with John N. Allen Park that we decided we were going to sell, and I can tell you, that went on for many, many years, where the people were very disappointed. Fortunately, I had the opportunity to come back and create a new John N. Allen Park and replace the name that was displaced at that particular time. I've read all the documentation. I've really felt that the, the, and I understand that people were told that they didn't like, the city didn't like the McCloud Road site, and sort of suggested that A.G. Bridge Park. There was an open meeting about A.G. Bridge Park. The same people that were there complaining came to the council chamber and were even more upset about the fact that it continued on. We should have learned the lesson that when they have a public meeting and people are against it, that doesn't mean they're going to stop when they come to a city council meeting. The Boys Club have done their homework. They've certainly, they're the experts in the field. I have never felt for one minute that they would be in competition with the, with the McBain Center. The similarities are sufficient that I think they're going to be successful. It's a donated site, they own it, the services are very close by, and if Counselor Carrio makes the motion, we're already committed to the five million dollars, up to five million dollars. If he makes the motion, then I'd be pleased to second it.
Hey, Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. I'm very thrilled about what's going to take place, and I'm happy about McCloud Road. It's got to be forty years ago that I taught the aquatics there for many years, and I loved it. And the volunteers that work at the Boys and Girls Club, you are wonderful people because you're so dedicated. And the Boys and Girls, even at Christmas, the Niagara Falls Community Pacing Service help out with your turkey dinner. And it's full, full, and these children are just overwhelmed by your work, and you are volunteers with a heart. Thank you so much, and I, I too have support.
Any other comments from members of council? I'd like to ask, or CEO, sorry, yes, Counselor, sorry, Mr. CEO, would you like to make a comment?
Just a couple of quick comments. The, the staff are also extremely supportive of the Boys and Girls Club getting a location, but there's issues here that we have to deal with, and it looks like it's going in a particular direction, but there's a lot of comments made tonight that we haven't had a chance to respond to. Unfortunately, contrary to the direction of council, the Boys and Girls Club decided to not want to be involved in site selection and go with McCloud Road site, and they have every right to do that. They've spoken to most of the councilors, and they've prepared a report. Unfortunately, we didn't get the report in advance, and we haven't had a chance to comment on it. And, and there are numerous things in the report that we have concerns about, but I'm not going to go into all of those because we've been there before on them. The real issue is, is this the best site? And, and the fact is, is that we hired Monty Brown to do the usability study to do several things. One of them was to really come up with a capital budget, to tell us whether or not the numbers were forward, the business plan would work, and, and also a five-year plan, operating plan. And the reality is, came back and said, no, it won't work. The, the plans for the Boys and Girls Club were wrong. They were too big, they couldn't afford to do it. And credit to the Boys and Girls Club, they've adjusted their plans in order to do that. But if, but, you know, using references like... But you're using references like, this is simply relocation. You're relocating a facility that's approximately, I don't remember, 18,000 square feet into a facility that's 33,000 square feet. It's a huge difference. And there's reference made to the financial impact. If we didn't grow at all, if we didn't grow at all, we got a real problem, because how do you support a 33,000 square foot facility? And there's probably a very good answer to that, but we've never seen it. We don't have a business plan. And conditional upon providing the city money was the business plans, and that will all come in time, I'm sure. But we better hope it grows. We better hope it grows, or this will be a liability, we'll never be able to pay for it. The reality is, the Boys Club is frustrated, and I don't blame them, and they want to be into a site. But we hired the consultant to look at feasibility financially, but also to help select the sites. And Ms. Morrissey just commented from the feasibility study, said, do not put it at this location, because it will affect the revenue at both locations. Now, they also said you have to substantiate that, and that's, of course, what was just said here. Those numbers haven't been substantiated, so we don't know exactly what the impact will be. We have been speaking to the Y MCA today. They're very concerned about this, because they haven't had a chance to respond. They haven't had a chance to really look at it. So I don't know if it will have an impact or not. I do know that we spent $24 million, taxpayers' money, to build a new facility. We hired a consultant who said, don't put this facility beside the one we built, because you're going to diminish the ability of the community center to generate enough revenue to keep it functioning. Right now, as Counselor Carrio says, McBane Center's doing terrific. Everybody that's in there, membership has grown, revenues are going really well, and that's terrific, because thanks to the level of response, the fitness center, it's not costing the city anything. And 70% roughly of the common areas are being paid for by the Y MCA. If by chance, and again, I don't know what's going to happen, but if by chance the revenue drops because we're putting two facilities side by side that have a lot of similarities, who picks up the tab? The agreement we entered into with the Y MCA was we'd support them and help them become viable. I'm not sure that this is the right step based on the information you have and suggested. These other studies that are referred to in terms of the North End and the impact on the programs, I don't know how valid they are. I do know that there's a lot of focus in the plan on daycare. And I also know that the provincial government has put together a special committee to look at daycare. And the people that are involved in daycare know that in fact there's a good possibility that there will be no more in future half-day daycare for four-year-olds that go to school full-time. What's that going to do to daycare? We don't know yet, because the study is going on. It could mean a significant drop in daycare, and it could mean a lot more programs before and after school. I think there's a lot of variables, and I'm not challenging the need for the decision. I do challenge the suggestion of a three-year that was mentioned in the report. Tonight is modified, but it depends on what facilities are picked. If we stuck with Palmer or Kerr, we'd be done in three months. If we modified the recommendation of last week not to look at private sites because of the issues, it would take a different amount of time. There's a lot of questions here, and my only concern from staff is that you hired a consultant, they gave you a recommendation, and in one part of it, the financial part, they proved that they were correct, and there's been a response to me. The other very important part, you're potentially making a decision to ignore it. So as long as we know what's on the table. But I will tell you, I've spoken to the staff at the Y. They're very concerned in the absence of having these numbers validated. If in fact this decision ends up to negatively impact the community center, then we'll end up picking up the tab. And again, unfortunately, we haven't had a chance to review the data and have discussion before tonight, and so what you're hearing is somebody's opinion in many cases, and we're putting together in different kind of ways. Like I said, there's a lot of comments made relative to history and so on that I really have issue with, but I wouldn't get into it now because we're trying to look at picking a site to go for. But I just caution you that we do have reports that suggest this is a bad idea.
Would you like to respond?
Yeah, your worship, just through you, just a point of clarification. The business plan, just very shortly after May 2007, was updated to reflect the smaller-sized pool and everything from the Monteith Brown plan, and it was submitted, that was July 2007. We had to resubmit that. We did that, I know Mr. Carrio got a copy, and so did Carrio, and it was also in your packages. We had to redo that because the province had wanted to see updated costs, and we dropped and dragged the cost from Monteith Brown, and we're at 11.5 now. While I can appreciate that further maybe scrutiny of the information that was presented tonight might be warranted, all that information is not new. It's all based on the Monteith Brown studies, the studies from Galloway, the studies from Nine Years. Nothing new, new came up there. It was a matter of looking through those studies and pulling those numbers together. I can appreciate staff's desire to scrutinize it more carefully, but certainly the talk about the impact on the Y, you could be talking about another study for six months. Mr. McDonald's talking about childcare and studies that are going on, and likely will go on for the next three years. Should we wait till the end of those studies from the region? Should we wait for this? Should we wait for that? Every month is $100,000, so I'll just leave that out.
I think I'd like to make out a comment, Ted, if you don't mind, too. I mean, to say that you're following, you're not following the direction of a Monteith Brown report, you weren't following the direction of a Monteith Brown report when you picked A.G. Bridge either. So I think it's a moot point. I think we looked at what location made sense at the time, and now this obviously makes sense at this time. So we can go back and forth 100 times, but all the information, all the documentation is there. We studied it, we looked at it. I think the most frustrating thing for me, honestly, was sitting here and seeing somebody just put their hand up, carte blanche from a galley, and making a suggestion about a school, and it gets added into the mix because somebody made that suggestion. I just found that totally insulting. I mean, we've been involved in this, I've been on the pulse of this project since day one, not just as Capitol Campaign Chairman, but it's just been a very frustrating process to add another school to the mix. I called the D S B N and said, is Diamond Jubilee even a surplus school? No, it's not. When's it going to be a diamond, when's surplus school? Maybe not till next year. Is there a value attached to it? No, we haven't even evaluated it yet. And yet it's adopted because somebody puts their hand up. We can go around and around in circles to add another site to the mix, but it's just costing money, money that we have to raise. So I think it's just frustrating on those fronts. I can honestly say we've had a good rapport with city staff. To say they want to wear is wrong. Two weeks ago, we met with them. We let them very clearly know exactly where we stood. Dean was there as well, and said that this is the direction that we need to take. We've already gone back and forth with site selections. We need to go and ask to have McCloud Road as a site for the new club. So that was the direction we decided to take, and that's why we're going to see.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, and again, I don't want to get into a debate here, but we certainly were aware two weeks ago of the Boys Club interest, the focus on McCloud. What I was saying was, we didn't have this report, we didn't get a chance to review it. And if we were the banker, and by the way, we are the banker, I guarantee you, if we spoke to Monteith, they would not support the comment that that budget is a budget that they've authorized. They've made several comments that I'm sure reflected in it. We have not received a detailed plan that we've been able to analyze and look at the feasibility of that plan. And while I appreciate there have been changes to it, we have not assessed that budget. The Monteith study also questioned the fundraising capabilities based on the project, and now that fundraising campaign will have to increase based on the new numbers. Anyway, I mean, we could be here all night, but you know, the issue of the daycare, the Boys and Girls Club budget is heavily weighed on daycare, and I appreciate Joanna's point that to wait three years seems silly. If we opened this place in three years, and suddenly the market for daycare facilities just isn't there, you know, God help us with the cost of the facility. And again, you know, we're not against getting an answer quickly. I, council gave us direction a few weeks ago. Unfortunately, we've been delayed a couple of weeks and haven't been able to do that. I'm simply cautioning council that there's some questions here, and if council is comfortable with McCloud and wants to move on McCloud, we'll do everything we can to help with that. But from a staff point of view, you know, we think it's a reaction to the frustration that's been expressed here tonight, and I don't blame them at all, but I'm not sure it's the best decision in the long run.
Yes, Counselor Carrio?
Your worship, I don't mind to date today. This is a very important issue, and if staff has comments or concerns, I'd like to hear them, as well as I'm sure the other councillors would, as I'm sure the Boys Club people would. So don't be afraid to debate this tonight. We've got a very light agenda. It wouldn't be fair to go home before 2:00 in the morning. If you have concerns, now's the time. I mean, I think the council's prepared to talk about it. Listen to the concerns. My personal feeling is, is that whether you're five or six minutes down the road, A.G. Bridge was maybe five minutes, six minutes away from where they're talking now by car. If you have a concern about whether or not it's going to be a competition for the Y, I think it was competition there. If you have a concern, it was the same thing there as here. If it's five-minute difference, a different drive, how is that different than being on McCloud Road? Maybe there's going to be a competition, but it would be the same if they're on McCloud or, how's the difference, John?
Possibly the competition's because if you've got two pools side by side, and it isn't a competition between the Boys and Girls Club and the Y. That's not what this is about. We own the McBane Community Center, and it's a competition with us who invested all of this money. That's really the concern. We have an operation in there now that's very viable, and it's doing well. And as you know, we in fact have decreased the amount of money that we're giving to the Y MCA because of that partnership. They will be here at the next council meeting providing us a substantial check towards the cost of that capital facility. So that's going to happen. You know, and there's several things, and just since you've given me a window here, you know, the suggestion that the cost has escalated, certainly it has because of the time. But the idea of it going from $4 million up to $11 and a half, I don't know where $4 million ever came from. The only recollection I have of $4 million is when we were at the, back in '02, when we're dealing with McBane Center, and the Boys and Girls Club made it clear that this partnership model wasn't appropriate for them, because they were not prepared and didn't feel their program would allow them to support a shared pool and gym. We said, in order to provide you a separate pool and gym, it would cost $4 million, over and above the cost of the community center. But I've never seen numbers that suggest that we could in fact build the whole facility for $4 million, so I'm a bit confused on that. The issue of competition, you know, why is it suddenly an issue of competition now when it's down the road, when it was never an issue of competition when it was built together in the same facility? I mean, you hear that all? That's a really good question, unless you sat in all those meetings and you know what the model is. The reason it wasn't a problem when they were in the same building is because they were sharing facilities. They were going to share the pool, and they were going to share the gym. That's what it was all about, and so they would schedule around it. So it wasn't in competition. Are you doing swim lessons on Thursday? If you're not, we'll be doing them. That's how it would work. In addition to that, simply because of the proximity, they'd be discussing their programs generally. So we in fact saw it as a real synergy that could happen. It wasn't in competition at all. So the, and the issue of the cost of parkland, you know, we're not selling parklands. In fact, if this happened, we would be enhancing our asset relative to parkland, so it's not a sale of parkland. But again, the real issue is, is this the best site? We hired someone to ask them if it was, and they said, no, it isn't, and I think there's some challenges to the criteria, which is valid, and the consultant said, you need to do more work on this if you were going to go for it. But the consultant made it very clear. The consultant encouraged us to commit $5 million to the Boys and Girls Club if they provide a sound financial plan, and if they decide to go on McCloud Road, not if they build a pool. The condition of the $5 million was, do not put a pool in the community center, the Boys and Girls Club puts that on McCloud. That's what the consultant said. So if we're going to go contrary to that, we'll go contrary to it. But without getting into those gates, the big issue is the impact on that location, and I think, you know, we can argue it all night, but I don't think we're going to clear it up. Either we make a judgment call and just go for it, or we decide to go to another site, or we decide to validate, really, is there an impact? Is there really a competitive element that's going to hurt both for either one of those facilities? And that's the data that we don't have.
We'll call on Counselor Pierangelo, and then we'll get to your next question.
Thank you, your worship. I guess just in response to Alderman and her, sorry, Counselor Carrio's comments about, you know, if we have any issues, then put them on the floor. I think staff is trying to do that. I think staff has talked time and time again about actually placing the two buildings so close to each other. And your worship, I have to say that, I mean, I respect Mr. Wallace's compassion and everyone else that's involved in the Boys and Girls Club, and I understand their frustration in terms of having a site that's shovel-ready, because they want to move ahead with the construction of the new facility. But your worship, I think it would be irresponsible of us to just simply ignore all the information that we have in front of us and the comments of our professionals on staff. I mean, when we originally started down this road, the purpose of amalgamating the Y MCA and the Boys and Girls Club was based on the fact that while the programs were somewhat different, the physical attributes of your buildings were much the same. Both have programming space that they use, both have gymnasiums that they use, both have pools that they use. So putting them in the same building, as Mr. McDonald mentioned, we were going to, I guess, obtain some synergies or some cost efficiencies. Now, your worship, we've gone ahead now with the community center. We've invested $15 million of taxpayers' money. The consultant is telling us clearly here in the report that they're going to jeopardize our ability at both centers to generate revenue if we place the other ones so close to each other. I guess the difference would be in why they're in competition now and they weren't before is because had we have done it and amalgamated in the community center, it would only have cost the city $15 million. Now it's costing the city $20 million. $15 million for the community center, and the Boys and Girls Club is asking for $5 million. That's $20 million, and we're actually looking at locating these two facilities within just over a kilometer away from each other. And I think what the consultant was saying in that underlying line, it says, "An improved geographic distribution of indoor athletic facilities in the city is required in order to maximize community benefit and improve the sustainability of both organizations." And we have to think about the community benefit here, because the community is the one that is paying for it, your worship. I mean, I think if we put it on McCloud Road, in 10 years from now, we're going to look back, and people are going to look back on it and say, so why did they put them both in the same location? Why did they put them so close to each other? We're going to look back, and we're going to say, well, we were told here not to, but apparently, you know, we knew better. Your worship, I think, as Mr. McDonald has stated many times, the Boys and Girls Club is frustrated at the fact that they haven't found a home yet, they haven't found a home site. We're frustrated as well, your worship, but that doesn't mean that we should settle ourselves into a decision, and we know in our heart that it's not the best site for them. Those are my comments, your worship.
Yes, this is the sec.
Thank you. It's triggered them. Thank you very much. We're by no means recommending that you ignore the staff's concerns whatsoever, and the fact that you choose McCloud Road as a site this evening does not end the amount of work that we have to do with the staff and with the Y and with all of the people in the community to make sure that the programs and services are well laid out for the community. I have some concerns about the McCloud Road being led through frustration. Believe me, I've had many of the studies and spent hours and hours, wasn't driven by frustration. It was driven by the need to save money and serve the people in the building right now. It goes back to that we are relocating the people in that building to another location. That is so critical right now. There's 2,500 kids in there. We're tight of space. We are transporting children in the summer camp, going to St. Catherine's. Niagara Falls children attended St. Catherine's summer camp last year. We have 30 children in Chukwa, 35 a night, that we don't have room for at Pearl Street. This is the L2T area that we're talking about. It's where your lower-income people are. McCloud Road is the right site. A.G. Bridge Park, I'm sure we all would have been very happy with, and that ships it. So this is not well thought out of a frustration, and we would look forward to working with city staff, especially the Y MCA, to help mitigate whatever concerns they may have and move this project forward and get on with the real issues for children, youth, and the city.
Okay, can I add to that, sorry, Ted? I think the other deal is, it's not competition, it's a matter of choice as well. First of programming, as I mentioned in the presentation there, you know, 50% of the people wanted to make a choice, are they going to sign up all year, or they're going to sign up indoor 10-week programs?
gonna sign up in the ten-week programs? And there's enough people in that fifty percent that feeds our programs at the club. We've never said that we're gonna build another community center. It's never gonna be a community center, it never was gonna be a community center, is nowhere near the size to be a community center, to be in competition with a community center close by. Um, the proximity, I realize you're building four arenas in the same spot through efficiencies, okay? What's gonna happen to Chippewa Arena once those four arenas are in one spot? I can tell you all those Niagara Falls no-hit players aren't gonna drive to Chippewa to play anymore. They're gonna play up here. So, whenever you move things around too far of a distance, this is what's gonna happen. We're within five minutes of where we are right now. We know the numbers, we know the people, we know the, the geographical geography that we have, and Chippewa is one of them. Chippewa wasn't even included in the Monty Brown Report. And it's a critical part of our services that we provide. It's, it is frustrating in that we are partners, um, we've had a good relationship with the city over the last couple of years, we work well with city staff, and I think that's the frustrating part for me is because we're at that point now where I think we can talk, um, intelligently without getting, uh, our knickers in a knot. Um, but I, I think it's just a time we need to move forward. The site has to be chosen. We, we can go and answer questions for the next two years. You know, at one time, somebody even mentioned there wasn't gonna be enough children born to substantiate daycare or ever, you know? I mean, here we are, we're building a school three blocks from where we are, a brand-new public school. They're not showing up on their own, I don't think we're importing them, so, um, we know the potential of the site, it's not gonna be a competition. And the numbers that I mentioned, if you were listening, they're a very small amount of numbers. It is critical, the daycare is critical to our services, and to move to the north end as it related in the Monty Brown Report is gonna be detrimental. It may have been a site selection on their criteria for a community center, but it is certainly not in the vein of a Boys and Girls Club. And that's how we look at it, being an equal partner. And that's what we are as partners. You guys invest two-hundred thousand dollars in the Boys and Girls Club bank, we turn around and pay you back a million and a half in services in the community. There's a lot to be said for that. Maybe I can't show up with a check at the end of the year and say, "Thanks a lot, you know, here's the amount of money we made." I can't quantify it. But you guys know what we've come for, with a pretty good budget, to provide the services to the youth in the community, and it's the equivalent of providing a check to you at the end of the year. Consistently, we've been doing that for fifty years.
Thank you. We also have, uh, Council Major, Counselor Carrion.
Uh, Your Worship, just as a little matter of interest, uh, as far as the daycare is concerned, I think there's gonna be a huge, uh, uh, need for daycare in that area. I think in the past year, I think we've approved something in excess of six hundred building lots, plus I don't know, maybe a hundred apartments, all in that McCloud Road area and south of there. So, I don't really see the, uh, the daycare dropping off. I think it's gonna be enhanced, really, uh, especially once those houses and apartments get built.
Thank you. Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, my other comment is, is just between A.G. Bridge Park and, uh, McCloud. We're switching, we're all happy at, at A.G. Bridge Park, we're going to one of McCloud. I don't think there's a whole lot of difference in those two locations. They still have a huge uphill battle. We're only giving them half the money, now it sounds like not even quite half. They still have to raise the other five to six million dollars. I still think they have an uphill battle. Uh, they have to have a plan that works, they're gonna go to the provincial government, uh, to try and get, uh, money, uh, based on our approval or our recommendation. And, uh, if they don't have a plan that suits the province, they're not gonna get the money. And our money is contingent on them getting the rest of the money. So, I still think they've got a, a huge uphill battle. They're asking for us to at least give them a site so they can go forward with their fundraising. They may or not, may not be able to get their money from the province, they may be delayed, uh, until they raise all the money they need to, uh, to match funds. So, so I think that they need to do this just to get going and continue on their fundraising, uh, which is, I think, still an uphill battle. Tell me if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Counselor Carrion.
The longer the delay, the more money gets added to the pot. Like I said before, the, the clearest illustration I had was when Monty Brown's, in fact, I would, whenever I made my deputation, I remember, the January oh-five, the first time I came here and said, "Let's get going with it." Um, and the concern was the amount that the, the, uh, project was gonna cost, and I said, "Fine, we'll take the double gym right off, it's two million dollar savings." Since that time, we've almost accumulated in the cost of the project, the value of taking that out there. So, I'm just concerned we're just gonna keep going in circles, and it puts the onus back on us, and it is very difficult. I mean, we definitely need the site selection tonight, we definitely need your support to go to the province and the federal government. It needs to be a priority thing, it can't be something we're just gonna look at, we're gonna study, we'll think about, and maybe we'll give you a letter on it. We've done the due diligence, folks. We've, we've done enough due diligence over the nine years, back and forth, and every time we come back, there seems to be one more question that we need to answer. What more do you need in fifty years of good service in the community? I don't understand what else you need.
Any other comments or questions from our other council? Any questions, then? Well, pleasure, Counsel. Thank you. Counselor Carrion?
Uh, Your Worship, I, I would move that we approve the McCloud Road site for the location of the New Boys Club, Girls Club.
Moved by Counselor Carrion, Counselor Thompson?
I'd second that.
Seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any comments with regard to the motion? Yes, Counselor DiDadi.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, you know, this has been, um, a repulsive process and there's been a lot of thought involved and, and by no means it's, it hasn't been easy. And I know maybe for some members of the board, it seems like an easy, uh, black and white, but we have to obviously consider both sides because everybody in the city, uh, it's, it's the money from everybody in the city that goes into this. And initially, my reaction was, there's no question, it's gotta be separated from Palmer Park. And, uh, I heard some compelling arguments on both sides, and I don't think there's an absolute right and an absolute wrong decision. Whatever the decision is, we're gonna make it work regardless. And as far as a good argument's thrown one way or the other, you know, uh, at first I was thinking, no question, Palmer Park to spread, spread out the facilities, and it was pointed out, the pool's only, uh, a quarter of the size, I believe, of, uh, what's, or what's at the McBain Center, and I thought, "Okay, well, that kinda takes away a little bit of the competition." And I heard Counselor Carrion mention competition, and, and he's a hundred percent right, competition's good, competition's healthy, it brings out, brings out the best. Uh, then I, you know, I heard, "Well, you know, why are we building way out there in the south end?" And I know if a lot of the development that's happening, it's gonna be in the south end, as we're told, gonna be the south, the south end of the city is gonna grow. Maybe at some point, that's gonna be the center of the city. You know, it, it may very well be. And, and one thing, you know, I know we've been criticized for, you know, beating this to death, and, and I'm okay, I can accept that criticism, because I don't think you can, uh, you can over-investigate something, you know, before you go spending the taxpayers' money. You have to, as I was quoted as saying, you know, you, you measure twice and you cut once. And I, and I'm okay with that, I have no problem whatsoever with investigating something playing off both sides, and I never have my mind made up, I like to keep it open so you can hear all the different arguments. But, um, after hearing, uh, some of the discussions around the table, I, I feel that regardless of where it's located, I think it'll be successful based on the way that the place is run. I think if it's, if it's run properly, you know, it's managed properly, I think the people will come to it. And the fact that you've minimized the size of the pool and the fact that cost is escalating, I, I can, I can feel the frustration with the group, and, and I was feeling the other day that, you know, no, it definitely has to be in a, in a different area, but I don't feel I wanna hold up the project any longer. And I, I personally feel that, you know, regardless of where it's located, this group, if this is the kind of passion that you're gonna have when you're, you're, you're building this place, and if it's gonna be the same passion you're gonna have when you run this place, it's gonna be successful. And I know that the YMCA has run quite well, and I know that facility is outstanding, second to none. I don't have too much fear that place is gonna be, is gonna be hemorrhaging. And, uh, and I, I think, you know, it's important to move forward, put the differences of yesterday behind us and, and move forward. And I just wanna say, I've, I've been back and forth, back and forth, weighing the sides out, and I just wanna, in a long way, roundabout way, say that, you know, I think that, uh, if the motion's gonna come forward, then, or as it has, then I think I'm gonna support it as well, Your Worship.
Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship. And I can see where the, uh, I mean, I, I, I can see where the comments are all leading to, and I know that I disagree, but I think there's just one more point that I'd like to make, and I continue to hear that, uh, that competition's healthy. And, Your Worship, I can't, I can't get over the fact that, while competition might be healthy, I mean, we initially invested fifteen million dollars of the taxpayers' money into the community center, now we're looking at increasing that investment up to twenty million dollars. Why do we wanna compete against ourselves? I don't understand how competition is healthy in that respect, when we're actually putting more of the taxpayers' dollars into the facility to de-capacitate it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council wish to speak? Okay, this time we have a motion on the floor.
Could we have a recorded vote?
And the members of council, I'd like to make a comment as well. I, uh, I have lived this actually a number of years as well with my wife's involvement prior, and, uh, I can tell you the frustration has, uh, been significant. I've talked to a number of members of the Boys and Girls Club executive and certainly understand their frustration. I also understand the concern of staff and the fact that, uh, we don't want to jeopardize , uh, two operations, uh, that, uh, would be hopefully working to the benefit of our entire community. I did have discussions with Mr. Steve Bots about two weeks ago, and he was very concerned that, uh, there would be some serious, um, issues on behalf of the Y. That facility, I think, has now over eight thousand members and is doing very well. We've heard the comments, so I express, uh, my concerns as well to, to, uh, to you as members of, uh, the board. Uh, certainly, I understand what Counselor Peter Angelo's saying, Counselor DiDadi, I appreciate reading the comments that, uh, Counselor DiDadi does acting mayor with the, regarding to measuring twice and cutting once. Um, I have some reservations. I hope that, um, in the next, uh, few months, that between the donors and supporters of the Boys and Girls Club, of which I'm one, that you'll be consulting those people, and, uh, there'll still be some input required, I believe, uh, uh, from staff to substantiate, uh, the position we're going to take. So, I think that, uh, from that perspective, I have some reservations about McCloud, but the site is, has been donated and it's available. Uh, I know we're moving geographically towards the, uh, south as Counselor DiDadi pointed out, and, uh, certainly no question about that, but I do have some concerns still. Uh, I certainly will support the motion, but I have some reservations, and, uh, I hope that if there's issues, that the Boys and Girls Club executive would listen to those concerns, and, uh, before we start putting the shovel on the ground, it'll start the process, as, uh, Mr. Wallace had said, uh, earlier this evening, and I, they say I sense your frustration. So, I just wanted to make those comments before we, uh, we take our final vote, so thank you for your indulgence. So, Mr. Clerk?
Counselor DiDadi?
In favor.
Counselor Fisher?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Carrion?
For.
Counselor Mads?
In favor.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Vote.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
In favor.
Mayor Salsi?
In favor.
Please.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wynn?
Uh, Your Worship, um, they had, uh, Boys and Girls Club mention that they also would like us to issue a letter identifying this as a priority project for purposes of sourcing funds from the provincial and federal governments, so I will move that, uh, we so do this.
Moved by Counselor Wynn, seconded by Counselor DiDadi. Any comments to the motion? Having seen none, I will in favor. Motion's carried, thank you. Thank you again, members of the, the Boys and Girls Club. Member of the council, I have a few comments this evening, and I'd like to begin by offering my thanks to Jim DiDadi as acting mayor for the past seven days. And Jim, I appreciate your willingness to take on the role during my absence at the International Mayor's Forum on Tourism. Also to Counselors Mads for covering some additional events on my behalf as well, so thank you to both your councils. I was proud to represent, uh, Niagara Falls and Canada amongst a hundred mayors from major tourist cities from around the world, in addition to another hundred and twenty-two domestic mayors from China at this unique innovative mayor's forum. As I shared with you at last council meeting, mayors attended as guests of the Chinese National Tourism Administration and also of the province of Henan. I was certainly encouraged by the provincial minister of citizenship and immigration, Mr. Michael Chan, to attend as well. We received very warmly in China and with, certainly with great enthusiasm. It was a wonderful opportunity to meet with other mayors of major tourist destinations and to exchange ideas. We discussed such topics as city branding and tourism efficiency preparedness. The aim of these discussions was to bridge another in order to advance and develop city tourism. The mission of my fellow members that attended, including today a mayor from Banff and the Leeds Thousand Islands along with Minister Chan, was to frame an alliance that would look into getting involved in economic development promoting the ADS status, the improved destination status. This is in keeping with, of course, a motion, the motion that council passed in November that supported, uh, us working towards ADS for Canada. In the province of Henan and all over China, tourism is exploding. The Chinese understand the concept of world competition, they want to share thoughts with other countries on how to benefit from the global tourism market. China has a vision for success in tourism. Chinese culture is unique and beautiful, and along with the rapid growth there over the last thirty years, these factors have greatly enhanced tourism potential. Zhengzhou is one of the best tourist cities in China. They have experienced booming development, uh, and are a major player in the world market with fifty-four point seven million overnight inbound tourists, tourism arrivals, which represents more than forty-one billion dollars, U.S. dollars. Today, China is the fourth-largest tourist destination and registered forty-one million outbound travelers, ranking first place in Asia. And our attempt to, of course, is to have some of those outbound travelers attend Niagara Falls. By two thousand and fifteen, they expect to have a hundred million outbound travelers representing two-hundred-and-eighty-two billion U.S. dollars. In addition, the United Nations World Tourist, uh, Tourism Organization predicts that China has the world's largest inbound travel destination by two thousand and fifteen. What, what this means to us in Canada is jobs and economic prosperity, specifically in our city. Niagara Falls was highly identified and recognized by the Chinese. Uh, they were very pleased that I was, uh, I was there as the mayor of the city of Niagara Falls, and I was interested in discussions and attended their forum. Given these facts, it's my opinion that Niagara Parks Commission and the Niagara Falls Tourism are on the right track. They are already promoting our city heavily in China. And I note, just to be, uh, acknowledging this fact, I was taking a domestic flight from Shanghai to Zhengzhou, and I noticed that the, there was an inside publication in my seat, uh, that actually called, it's called "The Oriental Sky," which actually had a promotion of Niagara Falls on the front cover in a two or three-page article inside the publication itself. So, it's a major point that they are so aware of our city. Uh, the Chinese are anxious to do business with us, and I am pleased to have attended to initiate the process and further advancements of working to incorporate China into our tourism landscape in Niagara Falls. There've also been some, some important community events in our recent, in our community recently that I'd like to acknowledge. Again, I'd like to thank all those involved in putting together this year's Mayor, Mayor's Prayer Breakfast held at the Americana. It was an inspiring morning, and, uh, it was certainly encouraging to see a large turnout of residents and young people who came together on April second. The Niagara Economic Forum was held on Friday, April fourth, and I was pleased to attend as it was a very significant occasion on which to discuss important issues facing our city and region. Uh, it was a, an internal exercise and a good chance to advance Niagara's economic position. I'd also like to mention some of the upcoming events that will be of interest to members of council and residents. The annual City of Niagara Falls Employee Recognition Evening is taking place this Thursday night at the Greg Prun Theater. The Human Resource Staff and Organizing Committee have been working diligently to make plans. We look forward to another wonderful turnout and evening that also allows council members and friends, family, and peers to honor the exceptional achievements of our city staff. I'm also pleased to report once again that I will be joining with regional council members and mayors to attend the Niagara Days at Queens Park beginning Monday, April 24th, 4th, I should say. And this is a good opportunity for us to present a unified voice for Niagara to our provincial representatives and discuss requirements, challenges, and opportunities for Niagara. I invite city council members to get in touch with me and with any items they would like to see addressed or brought forward during these Niagara Day discussions. The successful Schools and Bloom Competition that you heard about earlier event kicked off on April 22nd. The opening event will take place at A.M. Meyer Secondary School. I look forward to many students and teachers participating once again this year. Schools and Bloom enhances the talents and skills of young people and encourages creating a healthy green environment. And as mentioned earlier, Councilors Wynn and Councilor Peter Angelo co-chair the park and city committee, and I certainly that they'll be there as well to kick off the event. The Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee is spearheading yet another student-driven event next week called Green Week, which will coincide with Earth Day in April. They have also asked local high schools and elementary schools to participate by promoting one green initiative each day of the week. And this covers everything from limiting electricity use by turning the lights out to promoting garbageless lunches and riding bikes or walking to school. We look forward to the support of local principals, students, and families to do their part to support Green Week, April 21st to 25th. And finally, I'd like to bring to your attention the upcoming Two Hearts in Motion fundraiser to benefit Hart and Niagara. This will take place on Saturday, April 26th, at Our Lady of Peace Hall on Stanley Avenue. And again, for more details or ticket information, please contact Mrs. Christine Elliott in my office. And that again concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you for your indulgence. And we also have the first who wants to make a comment with regard to communications. Our first order is the Spring Licious Downtown Seat Event planned for May 30th and 31st and June 1st, 2008. Mr. Clerk.
Your worship, there's actually two aspects to this communication. Number one, the organizers have asked for some labor or fees, and staff's recommending that that be referred to staff. We can probably turn it around to the next meeting and give you an idea of what the costs are. But secondly, and it was one of your additions, similar to the Rotary Rib Fest, they require a resolution passed declaring their event as a community event deserving of city support. That helps them obtain their liquor license through the AGCO. So if you make the motion now, I guess it would be related to both aspects.
Would you make the motion? So you're asking for a report back? They only got another few weeks, so got to get it back quick.
Yeah, we will bring something back for April 28th.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carey. Thank you. Any discussion or comments? Having seen none, I will in favor. Motion's carried, thank you. We have some correspondence requiring the, some correspondence from the 2008 Minnesota Bond and Bridge Infrastructure Program. Ministry of Transportation recommended council approve the related bylaw listed later in the agenda. Moved by Counselor Carey, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any discussion? Having seen none, I will in favor. The motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council consideration?
No, your worship.
Thank you again. Yes, Counselor Deodato.
Did I misunderstand? Did you need, did they need the approval for the liquor thing in advance? Are they two separate issues or just referring everything to staff? Are you asking?
No, the liquor license will be the resolution that'll be approved, and they can get moving on that right away.
Okay, so where does this resolution go?
That.
So you need to work further on this, or?
No. What's that you're referring to? Do you just want to read it, please?
Where, Celebrated Downtown Community Corporation, so this is not, whereas?
They're not referring that to staff. They're saying approve that, which I think you just did.
Is that what you meant?
Saying that they can get their liquor license.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we have to, we're asking for a report back from staff to outline some of the costs involved in the company. Okay? Let's find.
It didn't seem we did a twofer. It didn't seem that we separated them.
No, we did it. We did. Okay. You may not have heard that, so. Okay, reports on property matters. I'm going to ask if there's anybody present, obviously there's no one in council, changes with regard to the next item, the C.A.O.'s report regarding criminally closing and declaring circus land. I'm sorry, Mr. Beeman. I'm sorry, Mr. Beeman. Do you want to speak to it?
No, I'm just asking for that. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, just I wanted to ask if there was anybody here who was present, has an interest in this land, and I'll describe the land as River Lane, part of River Lane between John Street and Hyrum Street. So obviously, there's nobody here with respect to the property, so again, Mr. Beeman.
I'm just trying to do the, trying to reconcile the situation in this land, although my opinion is on the land and outside it, the land is two, they're over and it's complicated into this parking lot. So this would be a, we're going to recommend it, it's the today, and it is not controversial by the public as to what it is, it's a public, it's a public, and whether you want to engage in a, 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 in